Okay, I will call heating to order. You have the agenda before you. Is there any? Questions concerning the agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
I'm a motion and second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carry. Betty, if you would read the minutes of May twenty second meeting.
May twenty second, twenty twenty three, Chairman Cluse called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors order at nine AM. Members present were present were Cluse, Rasmussen, and Helgabow. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Helgabow to approve the tentative agenda. Motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of May fifteenth, twenty twenty three were read and approved with two corrections. Approved claims for payment. In open forum, Tony Nicholas, Wright County Assessor, explained the homestead sixty-five plus exemption. This application is for anyone that owns their home and turns sixty-five by January first. Nicholas mentioned if the home is in two names, it is recommended that both individuals listed on the deed should fill out the exemption. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Helgabow to approve the liquor license for the Belmont Area Arts Council for the tractor pool in June and the power show in August pending dram. Motion carries. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Helgabow to appoint Anastasia Burke, M.D., as a deputy medical examiner. Motion carries. The Board of Supervisors will act as drainage trustees for the following drainage district assessments. Courtney Morris, Wright County Drainage Clerk, presented the following twenty twenty-three joint assessments with Hancock County, and that is for Joint Drainage District ninety-eight dash thirty-two and one twenty-one dash fifty-four. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Rasmussen, to to approve the joint drainage district assessments between Hancock and Wright County in twenty twenty-three. Motion carries. Morris presented the following twenty twenty-three joint assessments with Humboldt County. Joint Drainage District one sixty-two dash seven. Morris presented again the following twenty twenty-three joint assessments with Humboldt County due to a discrepancy between the total columns on the sheet and the percentage used for Wright County share was incorrect. Joint drainage, and that was on Joint Drainage District one thirteen dash five. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Helgabow to approve the Joint Drainage District Assessments between Humboldt and Wright County in twenty twenty-three. Motion carries. Morris presented the update on twenty twenty-three drainage districts eligible to be spread per Iowa Code four sixty-eight point five seven for no less than ten and no more than twenty years. The board then reviewed and took action on the updated Joint Drainage Districts one thirteen dash five, spreading it for the Iowa Code. And there you can see the list of the drainage districts that have been spread for ten and fifteen years. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Helgabow to approve the twenty twenty-three drainage district assessments eligible to be spread for districts being spread for, uh, four districts or being spread for ten years and five districts being spread for fifteen years each. Motion carries. Morris presented the twenty twenty-three drainage district assessments and explained that the joint drainage districts listed were previously approved. She also explained that the far right column indicates the number of years eligible districts have the option to waive payments for. And there you can see the the full list of all the drainage districts that will be assessed this year. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Rasmussen, to approve the twenty twenty-three drainage district assessments as submitted. Motion carries. Yes.
Just back up. It's have an option to waive payments for. It's not an option to waive the payments, is it?
Yes, they can pay it in full if they wish to.
Okay.
Or they can waive them for the ten years. So there is an option. They don't have to waive them for ten years.
But if you go the ten years, you have to pay every year. You don't get a a year off.
Correct.
So if they have until December first to make any additional payments without interest.
Okay.
And then it doesn't skip them whatever years they pay extra. It doesn't skip your, move the revenue payment up.
Yeah. But my understanding would be the way it's written that they could waive a payment is that? And they could, but then they draw interest on it, you're saying.
Oh, I see.
I'm just wondering if we need to change.
Number of eligible tracks have the option to waive payments for. So to make waiver pay, to waive.
To sign for waiver payments.
Yeah, the districts that have the option to, yes, it's signed for spread.
I just don't want somebody to figure away, hey, I don't have to pay this for ten years.
No, no, nothing.
Okay.
Okay.
I know.
Yeah, I know. I know it did, but I but I see what you're saying by by the way it's written.
Yeah.
I do, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yep. Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, that's, I'm good catch. Motion by, it sometimes terminology in our world is easy, but in in other layman's world, it's not, so. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Helgabow to approve the Fifth Amendment to the Child Support Staffing Contract between the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services, Child Support Services, and the Webster County as a host political subdivision. Motion carries. Auditor Ellis explained the urban renewal tax rebates from re nutrients and prestige. Renew nutrients will receive thirty-five thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty cents in tax rebate, which equates to fifty percent of the property taxes. Prestige will receive five hundred forty-eight thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars in tax rebate prorated on six hundred and fifty employees. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Rasmussen, to approve the Wright County Urban Renewal Tax Rebates for Renew nutrients and Prestige. Motion carries. Adam Clemens, Wright County Engineer, presented the amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty-three Iowa DOT Secondary Roads Budget. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Rasmussen, to approve the amendment number one to the fiscal year twenty twenty-three Iowa DOT Secondary Roads Budget. Motion carries. Clemens gave an update on the secondary roads. There were ten work orders completed last week. The three hundred tenth street shoulder rehab reclaim should be completed today. Crews are continuing to haul and level the year three rock rotation. Mowing of the hard surface roads is fifty percent complete in zone three with zone one and two being completed. Clemens mentioned the purchase of two wings for the mowers to be able to do granular road ditches more often. Motion by Helgabow, seconded by Rasmussen during the meeting. Motion carries.
Thank you. So with the if you'll just hear with Courtney and and we'll.
Let us have a revise that.
Okay.
And then I have a question for Adam. On the DOT budget, what you submit to the state, does that have to equal and match that?
I tried to.
You tried.
Yeah.
Humboldt. Trish from Humboldt County Auditor, she called me and asked some questions because he's got it done and he's published his, but didn't give any information to Trish, and she goes, do I have time? And I says, you're really pushing it.
So for DOT wise, he, uh, um, DOT wanted this to be done by June first.
Yeah, and I think they're approving it today.
Today, okay.
And she didn't know anything about it until today.
Normally, you don't, because there is no like publishing.
Yeah. For some reason, he did. He said something that he he published it, so. Okay.
Don't have.
I didn't know what they needed to.
Sorry, let's go on motion to approve the minutes. Sorry. I'm a motion and second to approve the minutes as correct, but all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carry.
Got it.
Claims have been around and are signed. Uh, open forum for public input. You're like, did you have some?
Yeah, about three questions, maybe more clarify.
Correct.
So it's big. Back on the rebates, like prestige fifty-four thousand, how's that really work? I mean, and they.
There's a, there's, I think I can answer that. There's a development agreement that is negotiated between the county and whoever is developing the business, and that is part of that agreement. And so we're abiding by the agreements that we signed when we brought those businesses in. They don't last forever. And I'm willing to let you look at either one, the prestige one or the re nutrients one.
And Prestige, uh, they pay their taxes like the two point eight million, then they get, yeah, they pay it ahead, they pay their tax. And then, yeah, they pay the tax, and then it's based on the number of employees. So if they had, they have to be actual employees of Prestige. They have a thousand workers out there, but some were contracted workers. They don't count. So we deduct from that nine hundred and some employees that the contract says. So if they were fully up and had that many employees, the rebate would be around eight hundred thousand, but they get penalized because they don't have actual employees and more contracts, so it goes.
As they had agreed to in that development.
Counted food service and something else. Oh, training.
They're contracted.
Those are contracted. They did not count.
So they don't count. No, no, no.
I interpreted the paper. Maybe I'm wrong. Yes, the next number of employees, and they added those in to get the thousand.
No, no. To get to the thousand, but that is correct, yeah. But they were only rebated tax dollars based on the six hundred and fifty full-time employees.
Yeah, yeah. Now, if they would have, they if they would have had that many actual employees, they would have received their full amount back, which would have been around the eight hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, you kind of, okay, I think I.
Kind of hold them accountable on how many.
You're paying them back, so.
Yes. They've got to still, yeah.
That's not every year.
That is for for fifteen years, for ten years for them?
Ten.
And new organic for three years.
Three.
That was kind of an excellent thirty-five thousand to them, and that's the same thing they paid the taxes.
Yeah, yeah, and they also have a hundred and fifty, uh, fifteen thousand dollars here they pay for the road improvement out there for a ten-year period, isn't it?
Fifteen.
Fifteen thousand.
Three years for.
The rebate is three.
Just curious. Must be a percentage because nutrient has got point thirty cents versus around number. Seventy-five thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty cents.
So so it's going to be based on fifty percent rebate of eligible property taxes that they can rebate on.
Okay, so it's a percent.
Yes.
Whatever that meant.
I think Prestige is twenty, thirty, thirty. What do we negotiate? Thirty-two, thirty-three percent?
Okay, so proceed, it's ten year rebate. Nutrients, three, okay, and taxes they pay.
Yeah, right.
And last one in the end, I realize you need updates and everything. Seems like there was remodeling the public health, you're gonna do something there's.
Yeah, yeah, remember when we looked at, with the COVID dollars we had coming in, we looked possibly doing the elevator at the old bank. Yeah, and that bid came in at six hundred thousand and probably be close to a million to put an elevator in and make it handicap accessible. We look at other buildings around, so we decided what the best part, the best place would be, keep the building we've got now, renovate that for public health, and also have room for an EOC. And also.
Emergency, emergency operations center.
Tax dollars.
That's that's COVID money.
COVID money.
Yeah, all COVID dollars.
Yeah, but not property tax.
No.
Okay, I hear.
Anyone online having any input? Good questions.
I got a question, Dean.
Go ahead.
Uh, re nutrients, uh, you you said it was like fifty percent of what they were paying or had to pay, supposed to pay?
Of eligible property taxes.
Yeah, of their property tax bill. They rebate fifty percent.
And I say all of those will be, there's certain.
Oh, and there's certain levies, yes.
Any, any debt service levies are like protected levies. The PEPOL instructional support.
Correct.
Um, so that is taken off. So then whatever left on their taxes.
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent of that goes back to the, um, business.
And that, and that was a reason, Bob, when we did the short-term loans on debt service for equipment and things, that those can be added to Preston's tax bill and also re nutrients because those are protected levels, so everybody pays.
That's correct.
Well, there's nutrients. Put on the paper again there. Are they in business yet?
They're gearing up again.
Like you've already paid them.
And they already paid their taxes.
They paid their taxes.
Yeah, if they wouldn't have paid their taxes.
Yeah.
They don't have an employee. If they have an employee, minimum employee, not like Preston's stuff.
Right, Prestige.
Again, for they, you're paying them, they aren't really in business yet, that's.
They're bidding business.
Yeah.
Right. But they are paying their taxes.
That answer your question, Bob?
Yeah, the, uh, the building for this, uh, nitrogen deal with re nutrient is different than the land, because the paper says, or online, it says they only paid twenty-six thousand and some change last year, or the March payments that were paid this spring.
There are two parcels.
All two owners.
And two, two owners. And then there's, um, land, and then there's also buildings on leased land.
That's correct. So it's a kind of combination of those two that it's remade.
Okay, so the new business plan means that, uh, on, uh, by September first, they'll have a new plan then. Ninety days?
That's correct.
Okay. Answers my questions.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay, uh, item number six, take action on approval for up to three hundred dollars for Christina Paradise. Senior Construction Tech for Snyder Associates Associates to attend the pipeline hazardous material safety administration meeting. Um, that takes place tomorrow and Thursday, uh, down in Des Moines. Uh, previously, we had discussed this, uh, and I had asked for the board to, uh, authorize up to three hundred dollars towards expenses for her to go to that, uh, but we did not take formal action on it, so I asked that it be put on the the agenda today to take formal action on it. Uh, and I would make a motion to authorize up to three hundred dollars uh, for Christina Paradise with Snyder and Associates to, uh, attend the PMSA meeting.
Second.
This is drainage district or, uh, county dollars, which, which fund does this come out of?
This would be county dollar.
Well, question, because we had discussed our drainage administration fund for one place to pay for it. We also discussed the local, yeah, L A T C F.
L A T C F, yeah.
And I think you guys were talking about the L A T C F, spending it so that it is not.
Coming out of the tax, that we're. I'll second that.
I have a motion and second to authorize up to three hundred dollars, uh, towards Christina Paradise um, to attend the PMSA meeting concerning CO2, uh, regulations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carry. Item number seven, review drainage district assessments not paid by the federal government. Take action to abate or use L A T C F funds to pay. Again, this is the.
I didn't put this on.
I know you didn't put this on the agenda, and and it's not. You know, when I speak against this, it's not against the person who puts this on the agenda. Sorry. I'll look at the screen then.
You can look at me, Dean. It's okay. I can handle it. I can handle it.
Again, this is something that I've been working on since I became a supervisor, trying to make, uh, changes to the federal law um, that would require them to pay drainage district assessments, because when they don't pay drainage district assessments, those, their portion of the bill is normally shifted to the other members of that drainage district. Um, the state pays their drainage district assessments, the county pays their drainage district assessments. So to me, uh, it's a unique thing. Their thing is, is that it's a tax, but we did receive, I think it was a hundred thousand dollars total in.
We we received fifty thousand already. There's another, yeah, and there's another fifty thousand coming.
Right.
And so.
So use those dollars then to offset that.
Right. Uh, do we have a total dollar amount that this would be?
It's, um.
Are you talking all drain?
Pardon me?
All drain?
It's. So right now.
Talking about the ones that are due right now.
Yeah, the ones that are due, and that's, um, the, the total amount for principal is five thousand six hundred and seven dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Correct.
And then there's, uh, the administration, the five dollars per parcel, and that's four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
For a total of.
Five, six thousand eighty, six thousand eighty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Do you want?
Well, and that was the one thing I had asked is, is there penalty interest on those?
And some of them are to date a levy, so some of the old ones are making interest daily. If they're to date a lot of the assessments. I mean, if I recollect everything, it's about seventy-five hundred with penalty and interest today. Over seventy-five hundred.
They clean things up. Well, I mean, at least the 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 landowners aren't paying, and it's coming out of the.
I agree. I mean, I agree.
It's all of this from the lower.
Now, this, I mean, there's a couple places.
And and it takes away the burden that would be placed on the landowners within that district. So, so I'm, uh, although I'm resistant to abate the tax because of principal, uh, I think that it is a a good out so that that burden is not shifted to the, to the property owners within that drainage.
And we can use those, that that fund to do that.
Yes, sir.
And it's not affecting our our taxpayers.
Yes, sir.
And and the reason we get this L A T C F money is because we do have federal ground in our county.
Correct.
And so, um, to me, it's a good use of the funds.
Yeah.
Um, but is this going to be a one-year thing, or is this going to be reviewed? Would you like us to review it every year?
I'd like to review it. That would be my feeling is to review it every year, because this is the first time, to my knowledge, that we've received.
Dollars and.
We have.
And I think it was, uh, you know, directly related to the COVID and the federal government, you know, with this big war for money that came.
Well, I'm sure we get, so if you, we can get the law changed, it's a good, it's a good source of, we we can offset it that way. So I I would make a motion to use those dollars for that.
Second. I have a motion and a second.
Question?
Yes.
Discussion?
Yes.
Um, Courtney is working on the assessments right now on the levy. Do you want her to consider for what she's doing now to use those same funds? Because what happens is, is she'll add up, okay, there's, um, let's say two thousand dollars of U.S. ground. So she'll levy an extra two thousand, knowing that U.S. Fish and Wildlife is not going to pay. So the the landowners pay the extra.
Portion.
That portion.
Oh, okay.
So, so for what she's calculating and doing now for those statements, do you want her to consider using the L A T C F monies? Or to, to account for?
Yes.
Yeah, I would say.
They're only paying based on what their share would be, though. The rest of, I mean, the rest is sitting in the money, but so are, how do they change?
If, for the ones that the U.S. Fish Wildlife. If, when she's figuring out her statements, let's say U.S. Fish Wildlife has two thousand dollars in assessments. She'll add two thousand dollars to the entire thing, knowing that U.S. Fish and Wildlife will not pay. And that's not the, not the current ones. Are you thinking the current ones?
Because. Going by what I can see, I don't know what she was doing.
Yeah, correct. And so what you can see is that seventy-five hundred, which is
still owed.
Still owed, and that will use the L A T C F is what I assume.
Mm-hmm.
And then for the ones that are being calculated right now that she's working on, usually she adds up, okay, there's two thousand dollars here, um, that they're, that U.S. Fish and Wildlife isn't going to pay, so I'll add two thousand dollars to everything else, so all the other landowners will pick it up.
But wouldn't you be over, wouldn't you be over assessing them? Because I'm, you're still going to issue receipts to U.S. Fish and Wildlife.
So if they were eventually to pay, they really, there's no debt left to pay because it's been collected by the other people.
So then you'd have to credit them then?
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to credit. I would think you'd have to credit the.
Yeah, because you're collecting all of it, so there really is no delinquency.
But there is, because they're not paying their receipt.
Yeah, and so, so that's the great question, and that's the thing that is so screwed up about this is who holds the bill on that? Does the county ho- hold the bill on that? Because when the work's done in the drainage district, the bill has to be paid.
But it's being divided, but right now she takes that, say it's two thousand dollars, she takes that two thousand dollars and spreads it amongst the people that are going to pay, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. So it, so each year, it's current. There's no one behind.
Right, but she's saying that that there shouldn't be delinquencies then. I think it's your point.
No.
No.
My point is that it sounds like the other, the other owners in the drain are being over assessed. Because it sounds to me that owners are being assessed in both the U.S. Fish and Wildlife and the same drain for the same bill.
Yeah, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife hasn't paid.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't, it could be, it could be Tony doesn't pay. It doesn't matter who doesn't pay. It's just that you have assessed everybody.
If John Doe didn't pay their five thousand dollars, it's not going to get spread amongst the other ones.
Correct, I mean, correct.
Because.
Right, we have a recourse with her.
You can't guarantee if that'll sell on the tax bill. You can't guarantee any.
I can't guarantee it, but you, the federal government says that we can't even do that. You won't put federal ground on a tax sale.
Really, I can't.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You have no recourse.
It, but what I'm saying is, if the bill is a hundred bucks, you're assessing, and and twenty of it is U.S. Fish and Wildlife, you're assessing the other people, their twenty bucks.
That's correct.
This drainage receipt is still here for their twenty dollars.
So if they were to pay that twenty dollars, now the the fund has more money than it should have in it, and you rebate those other owners the money.
I agree.
Yeah, that's.
Absolutely, I agree.
I think in my opinion, if you review the district that's causing the majority of the problem, all of the private landowners have an outlet onto the fish and wildlife. You can solve the problem by read, whatever you guys call that, redistricting, reclassifying. Because all of those owners have an outlet onto Fish and Wildlife ground. You do it with the white fox where it's not a drainage ditch anymore, and still a wild man.
Yeah, yeah.
They're not in the drainage district.
So you're saying exclude the U.S. Fish and Wildlife ground from the drainage district, basically abandon that portion of the infrastructure.
It already is.
And do a reclassification.
It already is, but it's still in a drainage district. The other guys that drain into it are in their own little sector, sub-district, and their outlet is on the Fish and Wildlife ground, but the Fish and Wildlife ground is still classified as a district.
I got you. I understand what you're saying now.
But how would you do that? Because you still have to collect the dollars to pay the contractors.
Yeah, but you wouldn't in this case if you did what Eric is recommending. The, the only thing that I see would be burdensome is the price of the recalc classification that you would pay an engineer to re-figure the boundary, the district boundary lines, uh, and write up a new classification.
Right.
You can still maintain the district tile.
Exactly.
Up to the outlaw.
Yeah.
But the vast majority of the acreage of the particular hotspot.
Is a wetland now?
Is a wetland now.
So essentially, by abating the federal properties, federal grounds, by abating them, it's almost like they get abated because it's an outlet charge. It's almost like an outlet charge.
I don't know.
And then, yeah, and then everybody else is paying a little bit more for that outlet charge to go on U.S. Fish and Wildlife.
Basically, that's what the Fish and Wildlife Service wants. They want their wetlands full.
Right.
So if, if you were to abate, then the other landowners pay more. If you were to use the L A T C F dollars, that hundred thousand or whatever, fifty thousand of it, or, you know, because it's only five hun- five thousand dollars. If you were to use that money, then the landowners would not pay extra. The L A T C F for your federal grounds would pay their assessment.
And therefore, the delinquent thing would be taken care of.
For this year, I mean, as long as we have that money.
As long as that might, will that money keep coming in, though? Nobody knows.
I don't think so. I think it was a one-time deal.
Yeah.
From what I read.
But the interest on the hundred thousand is covering some of the cost of what you're wanting to do. If it's in a interest-bearing account.
But we, but I guess Betty's question is, right now, if she's calculating these things, if there's a two thousand dollars that they were supposed to pay, you would not want to calculate that into the other, other landowners, because right now, this fund will go ahead and cover that cost.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, because if all of a sudden, if you, if.
Agreed, yes.
You're, you're getting money from two people.
Well, you're trying to get money from two people.
So essentially, when the tax statements are printed, then instead of Peggy mailing out U.S. Fish and Wildlife. Instead of Peggy mailing out U S Fish and Wildlife, she'll give all of those.
But are you allowed to notify the drainage clerk of what that portion would be? Well, she'd know that. She provides you the, the information.
Because what I wanted, what I was gonna say is, if you were to mail them to my address. And then, and then Courtney would write a check out of the L A T C F dollars to cover those.
So, but you're, what about, she's gonna take care of the back ones too?
Yes.
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 I, I have to mail them to the address on file. I know it's true. Remaining legal.
And you're sitting on about seventy-five hundred total across.
Right now, but I don't know that.
Okay.
That's, that's this, what was on the agenda, but I was bringing up the fact that, while we're calculating. Getting ready for the next year.
Courtney's online, and she just texted me and said fifteen districts would have to be reclassified. Fifteen districts have U S Fish and Wildlife.
Oh, good.
She's listening, so.
All right, so, and is, can you, Courtney, do you wanna? Unmute yourself? Would you like to come down?
Yeah, please come down.
So I'm wondering if that's what this other list is, the list of all of the one, two, three, four, five. Six, seven, eight. Nine, ten, eleven. About thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. So, yeah, I'm guessing this is the list with all of the U S Fish and Wildlife. Parcels and acres and.
Dollars.
Not dollars, it's just units assessed.
What would that look like on a map? But.
Well, that one would work.
In a particular area that.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Out there.
Yeah, by the east of the golf course.
The state, the county, the feds. Own about seventy-five to seventy-eight percent of the grounds in those districts.
Is that the other list that you gave me, was all the U S?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I didn't know what that list was, and then when you said sixteen, I was like, okay.
So what we were discussing, what do you see as being? An issue, other than the cost of reclassification through an engineering firm?
I, I think the reclassification cost is gonna be huge to reclassify every single one of those.
Good.
I mean, toward the end there, yeah, you have eighty, ninety. That I counted each one of the different lateral, so as a separate district, and that sixteen. But each one of those have to be reclassified.
Yeah, and that would cause fortune.
Yeah.
And they wouldn't, and U S Fish and Wildlife wouldn't pay, so you're better off to just.
Leave it.
If, for some reason, some land gets sold, you, they sell it to the Heritage Foundation. Whatever. Then you have to, to start charging, and you'd have to reclassify again, cuz they have to know what percent they would pay.
I mean, the other thing that happens is, and I don't know if the drainage district that she's talking about, I'm assuming it's the Moore's Lake one, eighty, ninety.
No, this is all of them, all of them that are in, but ninety is one of the.
The one out by Pike's Timber.
Ninety is one of the bigger ones, yeah.
Either the county, the state, or the feds could put up for dissolution of the whole district.
Well, if they're seventy-five percent older of the, the lands in the district, yeah. Okay.
But what's to say if, you know, you know, they're working on that U S Fish and Wildlife, what's to say that by the lucky chance, they come through and. Get it where they have to pay it? I mean, that's very wishful thinking. But.
That's what I'm working for, right?
But in the time being, we could take the, in, in, in.
Agreed, let's, agreed. Let's use the L A T C F funds to clean up. The mess, and let's look into, uh. And, you know, even if we could fix. That larger, the district where they own the majority of it, even if we could fix that part, then you might be looking at. Really small dollars.
I think D D ninety by the golf course, I think that was the wetland, not the, it was a mitigation site for the ag drainage well closure.
Well. What I remember of that project was, there was like a five or six hundred thousand dollar repair or something that was gonna go up through there. And it was cheaper to acquire the land and make it a mitigation site. Than it was gonna be, and it was gonna save the upstream payers.
Yeah.
A lot of money. And so that's how that came about, that area, that whole area.
So the ones you're working on in the Betty, you won't add the extra dollars in for the other people.
Correct.
We'll just keep it and use this fund for the time being. Okay.
Okay, so we do have at least one district that is getting assessed this year, but I'll have to go and recalculate then.
Okay, okay.
And not there, when you guys wanna take action on that again?
As soon as you have it done.
Okay, cuz I do need to get any waiver stuff to Peggy tomorrow.
Okay. Yes, as soon as you can, but.
You probably don't know the dollar amount, but no, okay, that's fine.
Okay.
If you wanna look at that, I'm letting the board know.
I have a motion in a second to authorize the use of the L A T C F funds to pay the U S Fish and Wildlife's. Portion of drainage assessments and penalties. All those, and is there any further discussion? I'm looking at Tony, not at you.
Specify for what years? For any outstanding, was it this year?
Yes, for any outstanding plus, uh, this year's.
That'll get us through.
Yeah. All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That will claim this. I appreciate that. We want this back, so that you can.
Yeah, I'll take that one back.
And then.
Look at those numbers.
You have to check with Peggy on interest, how much dollars and everything will be, so.
Okay, uh, item number eight, Tony Nicholas to the assessor to present the slew bill application. Uh, for allowance or disallowance.
Okay. This is just a yearly form, um, we deal with Colleen Trees. She gets all the signatures, as far as we know, she verifies everything, um, brings them to us, and we go through them all, make sure everything looks correct. There are about twenty-nine hundred acres currently getting this slew bill exemption. Um, I believe, and I'll have to look at previous ordinances, that, that this is something that the supervisors approves. I believe the max was three thousand, so possibly next.
Around there, yeah.
So possibly next year, we'll have to look at possibly increasing the limit. Back in twenty-twenty, there was a survey done, and only about thirty-three counties actually do these slew bills. And allow the exemptions, um, the rest either dissolved it or do not do it. Um, I was kind of looking at some numbers roughly. Um, the assessed value of these parcels that are currently approved is about two and a half million dollars. So, and again.
Dollars that would come into the passing into these, the valuation.
Yes, that, that's about a two and a half million dollar amount that's currently exempt. Like I said, I just did a, a quick. Uh, query, um, so that's a rough estimate, but.
And, uh, this might take some further calculations, so of that total. Did you say two and a half million? Of the total two and a half million, what portion of? Of that value would the county, uh.
Um, I would have to reuse these, so my guess would be. If these were to ever not be approved, then it would be considered non-craft, which is at a different, um, rate than craft. Um, and I did not look to see if these currently are like that, I would, would assume that they should be. But, again, we have, I would, just looking up, up the rough value, if I were to remove all of these slew bill applications. It would be about two and a half million dollars.
Of value.
Yes.
So then you would calculate your rollback.
Correct.
You put your rollback in there, and let's, I, I don't know what the rollback is for ag right now, but I, let's say it's fifty percent. So if it's fifty percent, it would be taxed on one point two-five million.
And then that depends too, cuz some of them are, you know, residential. Some of, there's something commercial, so.
Yeah, and so if it was all ag, it would be an average twenty-five dollars, twenty-five dollars.
Per thousand.
Per thousand, for your levy rate. Average levy rate, twenty-five, is thirty-one thousand two hundred and twenty.
Right.
That's just really rough, rough.
And that's not the count, that's the total, and then you would divide it by the taxing entities, correct?
Yeah.
Or that would be the count, I mean, the school districts would get their portion, the county would get its portion.
Of that thirty-one thousand, that gets a portioned out to everybody.
Um, there's only one that we recommend to not allow, um, it was a parcel that had been split off. So it was the original parcel, here I have the application in November, in December, they sold part of it, so there was a split. Uh, but the new parcel number already has new application. So the old one, um, is just, should no longer be allowed.
Okay, right.
Any other questions?
You know.
Say, what's your approval, Bea? You bring your stamp in?
I did. I have a motion in a second, uh. To authorize or to allow, uh, the slew bill applications, uh, as presented. Uh, with one being.
Disallowed.
Disallowed because of a parcel split, although with, after the parcel split, a new slew bill application. For the portion of that property that was split has been, is in the allowed portion.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, Karen.
Just yell at me when you have them done, and I'll.
I'll do it. Okay, thank you. Item number nine, Wright County Engineer Adam Clemmons, secondary roads update.
So, uh, your updates are on your desk, uh, the blades are, um, prepped and level, any rock miles that they got involved. We pulled them last Tuesday because of, uh, dry conditions, weren't, uh, being affected out there. Um, they did, uh, two of the operators in, out of Clarion, did some work with the pulverizer and pulling curb and gutter right now. Um, it seems to work very well, cuz we're not leaving huge chunks, because it's powder.
Yeah.
Essentially, so, um, we're pulling some of that stuff that's on the edge, you, reusing it, putting back. Uh, rolling it back across, and the organic just blow away. Um, trucks were hauling rock miles, finished up mowing in zone three. Um, the three hundred and tenth street project, you have five hundred tons of rock put on it, um, it's a dusty mess.
As it is.
I need some, uh, we need some rain. Uh, work orders, we got nine of them done, uh, those are attached on the map and list. Um, engineer miles were about seventy percent, or, engineer miles is a hundred percent done, year three rock is seventy point eight-three. Um, so they're on good pace to get that done, and then we'll start in the, on the gravel. Uh, mowing, as I said, is, uh, done, and all, all routes, didn't look like it in zone one or two. Uh, cuz it grew back just as fast, so, but. Uh, open position, uh, we had Jody Eisentrager resigned, uh, to pursue his business opportunities. Um, round about three or four of them, so he said he was getting too busy with that. Jared Beecher, uh, we put it out for interim transfer, Jared Beecher moved from Eagle Grove Patrol Operator to sign maintenance. Uh, we had a day and a half for, um. Jody to train, uh, Jared's body was there, and obviously, they still talk, cuz they have family stuff together.
Will it, uh, the truck will still. He was out of the Eagle Grove shed, will he, he'll move to the Clarence Shed, that is based out of.
Yep, yep. It's out of Clarence, he's a, is out of the bridge and sign.
Okay.
Uh, shop, uh, so then we have a Eagle Grove Patrol Operator position open, so looking for that, so. All out.
Thank you, thank, thank you.
And we're back on time again.
Item number ten, nine forty-five, hold the first reading of Resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-three. On declaring emergency medical services. And essential service in Wright County, Iowa, and appointing a Wright County EMS system, uh, advisory council. So, uh, no, this required notification to be published sixty days prior, which it was published on March thirtieth. Um. I looked at that this morning, so this will be the first reading, it requires three. Three readings and approval, and then it will be put on, placed on the ballot for a September election, right?
September twelve.
September twelve. Election. Do I need to read this, or just read the?
I know Carl, Carl was the one that worked on this.
Pretty much doing the same thing as we did five years ago, it's that process there, uh, cuz now they changed the law, so we have to go back. We did it before the law changed, so now that the laws changed, our five years are up. Uh, it'll sunset, or else we'll have to go through this process. It'll take a sixty percent vote this time versus a fifty percent vote last time.
Good.
Um, we did it over by, by over sixty percent last time, so it's just, uh, it's worked well for us, uh, things are moving smooth. And I hope to accomplish the exception.
It, it will not be a five-year, though.
No, this will be fifteen, I believe, isn't it?
I think so.
Okay. If you want to, something that we started that, you know, we're the first ones to do it, and a lot of counties have asked how we did it.
Right. And the new law, uh, it offers two. Uh, options on taxes, local option income surtax. Or an ad war on property tax, not it's seen seventy-five cents.
Right.
For one thousand dollars of assessed value. Last year. Or when we originally passed this the first time, um, we've never assessed up to the seventy-five cents.
Never went that high. And we, we, the, the income surcharge there does not generate enough, enough dollars.
Okay. So we will do it through an ad war.
Yeah, just like last time.
Yeah, okay.
And there is an option to do a combination.
Yeah.
You get as much income and then add to it with the property tax.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of Resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-three. On declaring a med- emergency medical services, essential service in Wright County.
I have a motion in a second to approve res- the first reading of Resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-three. A resolution declaring emergency medical services, an essential service in Wright County, and appointing a Wright County EMS system. Advisory Council. By roll call, vote, Carl.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Motion, Karen. Hello there.
Hi.
Did you have something for the supervisor?
Uh, yeah. I had a fellow come to me at my house here in town, and tried to get me to sign. Some papers for, for turbine. Now, I, to my knowledge, there's not a turbine on, in Wright County, am I correct?
There is.
There is?
Yes, then, in the south part of the county, in Wallack Township.
But you're here in town?
I live in town, I own a farm.
Okay.
That way between here and Eagle Grove.
Okay.
Can I ask what your name is?
Colleen Turner.
Hi, Colleen.
Uh, I was a tool.
Okay.
Two O.
Okay.
Uh, so, I do not want them on my apartments.
Right.
Because of the tiling. And he said that, that what they are selling are the great big ones. Which means they have to go deeper in the ground for putting, and I won't have it.
Okay.
I won't have it, so.
And that's totally your decision, you don't have to do it.
Okay, but they, they are okay in, in Wright County.
They, they are okay in Wright County.
Okay.
They, they have not come to us and presented any project or anything like that.
You want, and then, information that you gave me?
Uh, I received the information too, they came to my house also, so I, I have that.
I, I won't do that.
Good.
The tiling is too important to me. I, I, they're, they're disturbing the tile. It's not what's on top, so much as what's underneath the ground. So, okay.
Yeah, that's totally, yeah, that's totally up to you, you do not have to do it if you don't want to.
Nope, I'm not gonna do it. Depends that way too. So I got one more mic. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Gerald.
Okay, uh, meetings last week.
I had, uh, Ugg Mills annual meeting, went well, Shores and Evansburg. I had, uh. Essential Iowa detention. The new facility is up and running for. Kids that are over. The, keeping separate from the younger kids, that's up and running now, just got opened up.
Tech capacity, or?
I don't know what they've got for people in there right now, but I know it is up and running. Oh, let me think for a second. I had another one or two meetings. Oh, let me think for a second. I had another one or two meetings. I'll think about it, get back to you on that, but other than that, it was a busy week for me. Oh, I was, uh, you know, when was I on? All of the central hour detention. I was on Zoom, because I could not make it to the place, but I was on Zoom for three and a half flipping hours.
Wow.
Which. I sort of let loose on him and said, this is ridiculous, I told you when we went to this, every two, every other month meeting. It's not gonna work, we've got too much on our plate, we need to go back to once a month meetings. And I made that motion and got it through, because it's ridiculous to be three and a half flipping hours on a meeting. It's utter chaos.
Agreed.
Um, I had CICS, and they're kind of, uh, evolving now, because it's all state-funded. Uh, July one, it'll go to a new board format, they're only allowing forty-nine percent of the board to be allowed to be supervisors, which. Puts about four or five members of the counties that are in there. Um, the three counties that building CICS were not selected as the initial board numbers. Uh, with the, the initial board will be, uh. Of the forty-nine percent, the other fifty-one percent of the supervisors will be in advisory role, which will be meeting quarterly with updates, and then. As the term limits expire with that board, you can serve two terms, not more than six years. They will, they will rotate people out of the advisory up into that board, so.
So will you be on the advisory?
I'll be on the advisory at this point, yeah, uh, when we joined in, uh, Sarah Gordo, Wright, and Webster. Neither, none of them were picked to go on the original board.
Good, and do you feel that the supervisors will represent?
I think, I think it's gonna be okay, I mean, it's, it's, you know, there may be some hurt feelings here and there, but it's something that we had to do. And, and I think it'll flow, it'll flow well, it's just, it's a, it's a new learning curve for everybody. Uh, but the state dollars, state dollars, not county dollars right now, and the state's in charge of that, so we're disobeyed by the rules.
Oh, one of the meeting I did have that I missed was Chair of a Foundation and, uh, Gofield.
Yes.
But, uh, Daryl Stephen was there to take care of it. Thank you, sorry I missed it, it's one of them things that shit happens.
And I'm wondering if, uh, I had, uh, I should have had Midas on Wednesday and on Thursday. Uh, CFR by Zoom. Um, there was an email sent out in the morning, which is when I checked my emails.
That's your cancel.
That it was canceled, and, uh, I was surprised that evening when I checked my email again. That it was not canceled, it was a mistake, uh. And so I assume that you were at that meeting?
I was, okay.
Good, anything big to report?
Okay.
And then, uh, uh, CFR, again, that was a Zoom meeting, that was a, a two-hour Zoom meeting. Um, and I didn't throw a fit, but I was, uh, expressed my opinion that we needed to go to in-person meetings. Um, again, because of the length of the meeting, um, the. The issue is, is where to hold the in-person meeting, because we've got people from Iowa City and Des Moines. Uh, and Fort Dodge, you know, when it was just the Fort Dodge, uh, and Boone and Ames location. Fort Dodge was a pretty good place to meet in person, but, um, we're gonna look at some options, it sounds to me like possibly, uh. Um, the courthouse in. Uh, for Story County, it's not in Story City, it's in Nevada, yeah, that they have a facility that. Would allow members to zoom in if they didn't wanna travel all the way from Iowa City, but. But they have a setup that, uh, is conducive to a good Zoom meeting, rather than. Uh, when we hold it over, for dodging person and do the Zoom, we're projecting it on a wall, and it's just, it's chaos.
There's the other meeting I, I told you about, I did have a halftime meeting that also was on Zoom. And they'll be coming towards June twelfth meeting for the carbon.
Correct.
That they will be coming to that as well.
Good. That's John S. that's gonna be there.
Yeah, yeah. Other than that, just.
Okay.
You have two chats up here.
No, it was Courtney.
Was that Courtney?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, make sure, Dean.
Okay. Yeah, oh, uh, what is the status of the C seventy curve? It's currently bad, the new blacktop is coming apart.
Yep, uh, we, I noticed that this weekend, I think we have some subbase, uh, movement issue, issues on one lane.
Good.
Um, they are meeting with the contractor today and addressing that.
Good. Yeah. Bob, did you hear that?
Yes, I did, thank you.
Yes, sir.
You've moved quite a bit.
Yeah, I wasn't too happy.
No, I can see why, it's, that's pretty bad.
Is it just, is it crumbling?
No, it's dilaminate.
Really?
Yeah, so I don't know if they had a cold, like a cold spot in their, in their, uh, truck, and it just didn't roll right. Um, we've had to do a couple patches on it, we've had to do, we did shoulder widening to help, uh, alleviate any of the cracking issues and.
That's true.
Alright.
Go ahead.
Very good, so you, you'll give us a, a, update on that next week?
Yeah.
With the, okay, very good.
Maybe, maybe they should check, uh, Adam on that, uh, drop-off, uh. We're smart enough to know that, uh, there's about three inches of concrete exposed, and if you're coming around the corner. Going west, yesterday, we, uh, witnessed a, uh, a BMW get airborne in the front when he hit it too fast, okay?
There's bump signs out there, I know that for a fact, so it's where they milled into the concrete, they. Obviously have to have, leave it open until they do the surface, so I'll have them take a look at the ramp part of that.
Okay, alright.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Very good. Uh, anything else?
Most to turn.
Sir.
I'm most in the seventeenth turn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.